Welcome to our March 7, 2013 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I officially call the meeting to order. We will begin with an invocation, Pledge of Allegiance. I am checking council chambers. We have noted on the agenda to have Pastor Ben Taylor of Discovery Community Church. And I haven't seen Pastor Ben yet, so we'll go to backup. The invocation will be offered by Councilmember Jordan Ray, after which the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Darrell Colvin of our Gilbert School Board. And Darrell, we normally give out, as you know, the Boy Scouts a copy of the Constitution, but I think you know it, but you can have one if you'd like it. But thank you. We invite those in council chambers to please arise.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee grateful for the many blessings that we have. We are grateful that we are able to meet together as community members, as council members, as town staff, as people who are collectively trying to continue to make Gilbert a better place. We are grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy. We are grateful to meet here peacefully. We ask for thy blessings to be with us tonight, that those who have come and prepared to speak will be able to speak those things of their heart, that those on the council will be able to listen and with wisdom and guidance and patience and love and understanding be able to make decisions that will be of the best impact for the town of Gilbert and for those residents who live here. Again, we are grateful for our many blessings, and we ask for these things and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our deputy clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor. A quorum is prepped.
Thank you. Agenda item number one, the Puller of the Month, Respect. Vice Mayor Cooper, please.
Respect. As councilmembers and town staff, we agree to listen and communicate openly with the goal of building mutual respect. We pledge to treat everyone with courtesy, politeness, and dignity. We value individual and cultural differences and follow the golden rule.
As a golden rule city. Thank you. Well said. Agenda item two, the proclamation declaring this week as a Fix a Leak Week. Councilmember Cook.
May I invite Hawkins? Are you in the house? There he is.
Well, would you be so kind to introduce yourself to the public and maybe share a little bit about this particular proclamation and your role with water?
Well, I'm Hawkins Johansson, the Water Resources Manager for the town of Gilbert. Fix a Leak Week is a program that all the Valley municipalities put together to really focus on the ways we can conserve water and make sure we're not wasting it, using it the way we want to. And we've had tremendous success with some of the large users, HOAs, saving tens of millions of gallons of water. Fix a Leak Week is how we focus a little more on the residential side, and that times tens of thousands of homes makes a big impact.
And Hawkins, actually, you kind of have a, we'll call, a new role in the town. Would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, for about the last seven months, I've been serving as the interim Water Resources Manager, and just recently I've been placed in that role full-time, and so I'm very excited about that opportunity.
Well, congratulations. And I will say that during the holidays, I put on a plumber's hat and fix some leaks in my bathroom, so anyways, I'm supporting Fix a Leak Week. Anyways, whereas the town of Gilbert, Arizona is located in Snore Desert, and our citizens know the value of our water supplies and their importance to our economy, our quality of life, and our future. And whereas the amount of water leaked from United States homes is estimated to be more than 1 trillion gallons per year, averaging 10,000 gallons per house, with 10% of homes having leaks that waste 90 gallons of water or more per day. Whereas common household leaks include leaky toilets, which I'm very aware of, dripping faucets, broken irrigation sprinklers, and other leaky valves. Whereas the town of Gilbert has a member of the AMWA, which is the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, which I'm now a board member of, a partner of the EPA Water Sense Fix a Leak Campaign, and whereas the AMWA members work together to develop and implement regional consistent water management policies and programs, including providing information to customers about the importance of not wasting water. On behalf of John W. Lewis, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, hereby declare March 18 through March 24, 2013 to be Fix a Leak Week. And with that, can we have a round of applause for Hawkins and what he does for the town of Gilbert?
Agenda item 2A, we recognize in Gilbert, the Gilbert Christian High School won the 3A state championship. And Councilmember Daniels, I understand we have certificates signed that'll be sent to them, and we show this picture of the team, and I think for all those here in council chambers and Councilmember Daniels, anything else you wanted to say before you give a nice big round of applause?
No, Mayor, I think we're all proud of their accomplishments, and they've represented Gilbert well.
So, if you can please join me in a big round of applause for Gilbert Christian High School, champions. Thank you. We will move to communication from citizens. And Vice Mayor Cooper, before I read what's on the agenda, do we have some requests tonight?
Not for communications from citizens.
Okay. Let me just look around and confirm. All right, we will move on. On the consent calendar, as listed, there are items on the consent calendar that may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Now, as we did the roll call, we note that Councilmember Taylor will be here in just a few minutes, and there was a request to have 10 and 16 pulled, and so let me also look in council chambers. Were there any, well, we didn't have any requests, so I think we'll just take those off and cover those later, and Vice Mayor Cooper, continue.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar items 3 through 17, except for item 4, 10, and 16, which we'll pull for discussion. This also includes item 9A, which has been added to the agenda. And then also pulling forward item 26 with a recommendation from Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, that recommendation is to appoint two regular members to the Industrial Development Authority, Carlisle Begay and William Bryce, with terms beginning March 13, 2013 and ending March 11, 11, 2019.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with the motion second, please vote. That's approved with a six oh vote. To Susan from Legal Question, item 23, I understand that there will be a potential motion to move to continue to another meeting, and is it appropriate that we can do that now? So if there was anyone here for item 23, that they will know that right now. And I also, I'm just clarifying, I do not need, because of the public hearing, to open it or close it. We could just go ahead and accept that motion.
You can do that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper. Councilmember Ray, if you could please proceed with that motion.
Mayor, thank you. I move to continue item 23.
Is there a second?
Second.
I need a date and time, sir.
Should we give it one month? Kyle, do you think that'd be enough time? So, the next meeting, a month from now?
So, the first meeting in April. All right.
Second.
Well, okay, there's a second, but April 4 is the date.
Second, second.
That was an Abbott and Costello move. With that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a six oh vote. Thank you. Agenda item number four, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I just, didn't have to be now, and I'll do it real quickly, but Susan, did we have an answer to that question, or is that going to be followed up on later as far as the rankings and if that can be public and all that?
Actually, I did look at it, and the staff rankings or the committee rankings can be made public before the award.
Okay, and I'll raise that again for a future meeting, but thank you for answering that question. With that, I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion to approve, I assume?
That's right.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you.
Mayor, who seconded that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 10 and 16 together or separate? Councilmember Taylor?
Separate, please.
Okay, separate, so agenda item number 10.
Happy to see the activity on this grant and supporting of some of the great special events that we have here. And as I read through the application, I noticed that there is a little box where we would describe our sustainability plan, and grants like this are designed to just seed an activity, and then later on, you would have a financial plan that would not require an entity to reapply for the same grant. So, what I'd like to do, Mayor, is move to approve this item as it's worded with additional guidance that we put in that sustainability plan, that we will fund these particular special events with private sponsorships going forward, just as part of that application.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that to clarify or? Vice Mayor Cooper?
Question from, for staff on that, just not specifically the grant part, but what I think I heard the motion saying is that the entire event would be privately, funded through private fundraising. I just want to make sure that that's part of our plan, or is it just to cover the $2,000 piece?
Just the $2,000.
Oh, okay. Any comment on that? Is that how that might impact the projects?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, my name is Jessica Fierro. I'm the Community Development Specialist. Just to clarify, you're requesting that the match for the $2,000 be used with private donations?
No, what I'm requesting is that in the box where we talk about our sustainability plan, how are we going to fund this event in the future? We describe how we're going to fund it with private dollars going forward, so it covers this $2,000 that we would receive this particular year should we be awarded and not need this, you know, and we have this added perhaps in that sponsor packet as a way to fund it going forward.
Is another, just so I understand, is another way of saying that, that this, we use this grant one time and not again? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, and that's usually the intent of these seed-type grants, and why they even ask for sustainability plans, so that they know that it's money that they can deploy next year in another community.
And there could be other grants, different, that if they make sense, town staff could pursue. Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, as a temporary measure, I'm prepared to support it under those terms that, you know, this year it's, there's going to be tax dollars supporting it, but going forward, the goal is to have private sponsorship cover all that. So it's budget neutral. I think that is the right approach, and so it wouldn't be for this year. That gives a full year to prepare for the next go-round, so.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Cook?
Jessica, a quick question. No doubt the event this year, being our inaugural event, was well done, but I know that other communities near us, Chandler and I believe Mesa, also had an event as well. And again, I'm just throwing this out to the council, and is there an opportunity maybe to collaborate and partner for maybe a single large event where we have combined resources and combined funding where the event can be, you know, shared maybe amongst the East Valley, you know, municipalities? Again, I'm just throwing this out as an idea.
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, that's certainly something that staff can explore and discuss with our neighboring municipalities. It's not something that we've done in the past, but I think they would be open for discussions to do that in the future.
And the reason why I bring this up, only because you can share potentially the funds together, you know, and maybe that might alleviate a lot of the costs from every city, but if they were all combined in one, maybe that might be, again, it might be a benefit, it may not.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I believe I heard motion second, so that's taken care of. With that, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. Agenda item 16, Councilmember Taylor.
So, along the same lines with the idea of the sponsor packet as it's built, and the way I understand it, Melanie, you can correct me here, is it's built to cover the cost that the town would donate in terms of some of the monies like this. And I know the 4th of July is kind of being fit in here, so what I'd like to do, Mayor, is move to approve this as it is with a request to include the 4th of July costs, whatever they may be, for next year in that particular sponsor packet. So, the idea is that these costs will be just part of the sponsor packet, and private sponsors will go ahead and cover these costs, and then we can go ahead and allocate, you know, this as part of our, you know, 10 or so signature events. Is that clear as mud?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, Melanie Dykstra, Interim Parks and Recreation Director, the only concern I have regarding that is we're not quite sure what the direction of the event will be for the following year and whose event it will be. So, at this point, I would like to make sure we understand who the promoter will be of the 4th of July moving forward in order to see if we can collaborate on what that sponsorship may look like moving forward before we place it just in our sponsorship booklet, since it's not technically our event.
Mayor, part of, as I did some feedback too, for the council to be aware, from a fire marshal perspective, with the growth around Central Christian, this may be our last year to do it there, and so it is probably appropriate tonight to turn to town leadership and just to ask you to be thinking and preparing and including budget items for next year, even though we don't know the details. But I think with that comment, it might be if we kept at Central Christian to do that. If not, we'll take that as a guideline, but have flexibility depending on what happens for the July 4, 2014 celebration. Does that work?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Does that work, Melanie, for you? Okay, Councilmember Peterson?
I just wanted, and I didn't do this in study session, but I am sincerely grateful for the extra time that was spent on this to raise a little, and I know it wasn't a lot, and there was some staff time in that. I still think we came out in the net on that. I don't know how much, but I do appreciate that, and so, and I do support this as a temporary for this year. There's still going to be some tax dollars covering this special event, but the goal is to be budget neutral going forward. And certainly, we can hear whoever's going to be running it next year, we can certainly hear how that process is going, but I think the mindset would be that we would try and cover, if we're going to waive any of the town fees for services, that we would be of the mindset to cover those fees and sponsorships that we've raised through the package as part of the full deal, so.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
I agree with the direction that we're talking about going tonight, although I will say that I don't necessarily agree 100% that it needs to be budget neutral. I just wanted to make you aware that there may be divergent opinions on that, but I think the appropriate time to have that conversation is when we're doing our budgeting for our special events and that kind of thing for next year, and we can have that kind of conversation there. But with that, I'm prepared to move forward as it's been described. I don't know if there was a motion.
There's not a motion yet, so I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, yeah, I'll move to approve 16 with the guidance to include it in the sponsor packet with, you know, the known ambiguity here for next year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Susan, you okay with that?
I'm probably not okay with that as it is, and so I think there's too much ambiguity. And so, while I think direction's been given, or at least we've kind of made that pretty clear in the record, and we will be having a subsequent discussion during the budget deliberations, we don't even know who will have it or whatever. I don't think it should be included as part of our motion. I think the information is out there for staff, and so I would just say, well, and I won't amend, but I want to hear if anyone else would like to hear an amendment on that, because I think I'd rather have it just go back the way staff had it recommended.
Mayor Lewis. In order to move forward on this, because I think we're all in agreement of what we're going to do for this year, what we're discussing at this point is what we're going to do for next year, let's include this in a special, a comprehensive special event discussion that we need to have prior to or concurrent with some of our budget discussions, so.
So, if the motion, which was comments made reflect what you just said, that we're really asking our town staff to have further discussions and preparation for next year, knowing that we don't really know what that would be, does that work?
Yeah, the precision of sponsorship package for next year and, you know, including it and that kind of thing, I wasn't comfortable with. I'm comfortable with that direction, and if it takes an amendment of the motion, we can.
Right, and I think it's potential that Councilmember Daniels further clarified what Councilmember Taylor proposed, and as long as Councilmember Taylor agrees with that, then I think we're set.
Yeah, Mayor, so I'll withdraw that motion and remotion approval of 16 as worded with the commitment that we revisit it in a special discussion on special events during budget discussions.
Second.
There's a motion, second, please vote. Thank you, that's approved with a seven oh vote. We move to the public hearing. I was just turning to Vice Mayor Cooper. I do not see any cards for items 18 through 22, and yet, Vice Mayor Cooper, let's see if, is that 18 through 22? All right. Let me look around council chambers and confirm, were there any citizens that wish to speak on items 18 through 22? Now, to the town council, between the seven of us, are there items 18 through 22 that we wish to have discussion and dialogue about? So I'm going to proceed by opening the public hearing for 18 through 22, which I just did. And I closed the public hearing on items 18 through 22, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I motion that we approve items 18 through 22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote. Thank you, that's approved with a seven oh vote. We move to administrative items. I will read from the agenda the section that describes administrative items. These are for council discussion and action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the council regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on an administrative item should complete a request to speak for them and indicate the item they wish to address. Counselor may or may not accept public comment, which we've always done. But 24, we did have a discussion several weeks ago and also during study session. Are we ready to proceed with 24 with a motion, or would we like an overview and some council discussion? Councilmember Peterson?
Oh, we can start with an overview. I think on this side it would be very appropriate.
Then, we will ask, Patrick, would you be the one to give the overview? Please.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, this is the development agreement between the town of Gilbert and American Furniture Warehouse. They will be bringing roughly a 600,000-square-foot retail facility to our town, a furniture store. We have negotiated with them the opportunity to recapture up to $2 million in off-site infrastructure costs. That would be structured through a reimbursement of up to 30% of the TPT sales taxes generated by the store on an annual basis, and that would be for a maximum of five years in duration.
Mayor, I had a couple questions, and then I'll have some comments, but the, I noticed in the agreement that the maintenance of the improvements in the right-of-way was to be done by the town, and that's very typical for the road and the sidewalk, but usually the landscaping is maintained by the development. And so, my question is, was that intentionally remove that obligation to maintain the right-of-way, or can you help me understand that?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, actually, it's my understanding that the dedication of landscaping along our public roads is also our customary tradition for us to maintain landscaping, once it's been dedicated to the town.
Well, I've had extensive conversations with Attorney Goodwin on this, but don't we have a property, we force a property management company to be formed so that they can maintain the landscaping, the right-of-way? That's very typical on developments, correct?
For residential uses, yes.
Is it not in commercial?
Well, let's put it this way. We've had our discussions primarily regarding the open spaces and the responsibility to maintain landscaping within an open space tract, usually in a residential subdivision. And in a commercial subdivision, we do that also. But as to the public rights of way, in residential, yes, it's very common, and that's often put on the plat. In commercial, I don't know. I don't, I'm not familiar, I'm not aware that that's the norm, unless it's an agreement between the developer and the town, where the developer wants to maintain it to a standard that maybe he doesn't think the town will.
Is there someone else that can answer what the norm is for this? I'm just trying to understand if this is, you know, part of the benefit or not, I'm just trying to process that.
Mayor Lewis, we sign substantial contracts with landscapers, and we have that all, and it's all zoned out by Zone A, Zone B, Zone C, and Zone D across the community, and so we do pay for that, and we sign an annual contract for the rights of way in the town to be maintained by us.
Yeah, I understand that, but there are other cases where I know we ask the property management or homeowner, I know even in commercial, there are property management companies, and they certainly could take that role on. I'm just wondering if we typically ask them to or not. I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, I did have a conversation with Assistant Town Engineer Edgar Medina about this subject. There are times when a developer, based on the level and quality of their development, would prefer to maintain the landscaping to their standard, rather than the standard the town will maintain it to, but I think, not to say there is not exceptions, but generally we will take the landscaping in after a one-year warranty period and put it into our maintenance.
There was one other question, and I'm just curious how this works. I know that there's going to be a reporting requirement from them to us about their revenues so that we can give them part back to reimburse for the cost of the infrastructure. I understand that. And they have privacy rights to those revenues, and so in order for that to be public, they would have to release that information. I guess my question is, in the interest of transparency, wouldn't it be a good idea to go ahead and ask them to waive that privacy on that? It is a public tax. I think the public should have the right to see how that's progressing through that ag- progressing through that agreement, how much has been paid off so far, and that kind of a thing. So is that something we've contemplated, including in these agreements?
I'm not sure I understand the scope. It does contain a waiver as to release of information to the town. I'm not sure I understood your question, though.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we still don't have the right to publish it publicly. What I'm saying is I would like the transparency of the public to be able to see how that's progressing. We have a lot of older agreements that anyone in the public has no clue. We've got millions and millions of dollars left, and that's certainly something of interest to the public. It could be considered an obligation. I mean, there's revenue coming in, but part of it, it's already obligated to go back out. We may want to consider putting it in our financials as well. So I, it's a thought, and I'm just wondering if there's any interest in pursuing that, or...
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, typically, and state statutes, and Arizona is not out of line with the rest of the nation. Those are closely held private information, sales tax, volume, revenues, for many reasons. In one, you're letting your competitor know how much volume you're doing, which would give them an idea of how you're doing in the market. There's a lot of reasons, a lot of very good reasons to keep that private. They would have to release that at least to the town so that we have the opportunity to audit and verify it, and we would certainly certify every, it's, the public is aware that they can only recoup a maximum of $2 million in certain categories, and we would certify that that is being done. But I would advise against requiring them to make that public.
Well, I think they're coming, asking for something, a special deal, you know. They're frankly getting an advantage on their competition anyway, so to ask them to give up a little bit of their privacy related to this, the public can understand it. I don't think it's too much to ask, but I don't know that that'll go anywhere, but I wanted to throw that out there. If there are other comments or questions, you know, I'll wait to hear that, but I do want to have, make some comments before we vote.
Okay. Other comments or questions? I know the applicant is also prepared to provide some comments if we make that request. All right. I, Councilmember Peterson, I get the sense that the group is ready to proceed, and so if you have additional comments, please.
Mayor, I'm not going to repeat everything I've said on previous occasions. I just want to briefly state that I am very concerned with the way we're proceeding with these agreements. In particular, this deal is quite different from the last one. It's clear that we're not going to be even giving the same deals to those that we give deals to, and it's certainly clear that there are plenty of businesses, particularly small businesses, who will probably never be offered any of these deals. So I very much have a problem with picking winners and losers, and I really can't avoid that that's really what we're doing with the way we're working on this. And so I think there's other ways to approach this, same kind of incentive, where it's a broad-based incentive available to all. I mean, those are the kinds of incentives where everyone can participate in, where everyone's treated the same. Anyway, one comment I haven't talked about on previous occasions, but I want to point this out. There's a lot of uncertainty in the market as it is. This is a difficult place to make a plan for running a business and succeeding, and a lot of people fail. Uncertainty is one of the toughest things that private businesses face. I personally believe we're creating an atmosphere of less certainty by doing these one-off agreements. If you were a furniture company in Gilbert, who's already located here recently, and all of a sudden here comes in another furniture company, and they have an advantage over you, that could very well be a problem for you and your model for making money and succeeding, because they can actually charge less and probably both charge less and take more profit on each item because of the fact that that incentive's not available to all competitors of the same, in the same area. So I very much have a problem with that, and I think the uncertainty is harmful for our market. I do want to point out that we agree on the goal. The goal is sustainability for Gilbert, and let me clarify what I mean by that. I mean financial sustainability for Gilbert. That means we get to build out and are able to maintain our critical services for our citizens without any new tax revenue streams. That's my goal. And I share, I think we share that basic goal. I've done a lot of study on this. It's interesting. You can read Road to Serfdom and a lot of other books about economics, Adam Smith and Wealth of Nations. And what I discover is there's a paradox. It's interesting. We're so concerned with the outcome, we want to try and guarantee it and control it and micromanage it. And to me, the paradox is that as we let go of that guaranteed outcome by treating everyone the same and letting the free market do its thing, we actually have our best guarantee of the economically sustainable outcome that we're seeking, in my opinion. So, anyway, I just want to explain my vote briefly here that this is not a no vote to American Furniture Warehouse. This is a yes vote to them and all the other businesses that want the same opportunity. And so with that, I'm going to be voting against this tonight. I would again urge expeditious, you know, efforts to bring forward a policy that would treat everyone the same.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook, let me just get a quick sense of other feelings, please.
I appreciate Councilmember Peterson's comments, and I know that I would love to believe that we are in a world where everyone's playing fair. We know that many of the municipalities are always throwing out incentives. Some of those incentives seem to be, you know, outrageous. I look at them and going, you know, the taxpayers, you know, are going to fork the bill for, you know, something that may be very unfair. What's nice about what we're doing with this particular project is that it is based upon a performance. The owners of the furniture company, in order for them to receive some of the, we'll call incentives, is based upon performance, and it's not by any means going to hurt the taxpayer. When you look at their track record in Colorado and the number of businesses that they have set up shop in, and the amount of revenue each of those communities are developing, I mean, I'm looking forward to that type of revenue stream, the type of partnership with this particular organization, because they are very much community-focused. So, again, I wish the world, the global world, the global economy had fairer rules that everyone played to. But I do know, unfortunately, there's, you know, countries that will incentivize, you know, American businesses to set up shop in China, Mexico, you know, Indonesia. It's a very, very different competitive world in the industry. And even in my own company, you know, we look at all of the ways that we can make a product cheaper and our margins to improve, and sometimes we take advantage of some of those incentives around the world. But I do know that in this particular case, it's based upon performance. I'm very good and very happy to move forward with this particular agenda item.
Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, I feel like I've stated my comments previously in other public meetings, and so I will be very brief. I am in favor of this agreement. We talk about infrastructure, and there's been a lot of comprehensive deals that have been done in Gilbert over time, and not all of them have been based on performance, and not all of them have been for public infrastructure that benefits the community as a whole. And so for those two reasons, Mayor, and because this deal is structured in a way that provides value to our citizens, I am going to be voting in favor tonight.
Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly sympathetic to, you know, a lot of different points here. And I won't restate some of the things I said earlier, but I'd like to have a discussion with the council on ways that we can try to make it fair for everyone. You know, I'm a proponent of free and fair markets. I think that's, when we look at the history of how the country grew up, a lot of the growth in America came without incentives. There was definitely some that did, no question about it. That's part of our history, but there's a lot that didn't, that really benefited our community, and there's good examples. I'd just like to take the opportunity with the council sometime to see if we can make this more fair and offer these agreements to not just this company, but others on the same basis, so that if it's good for one, it's good for all, and it'll be good for Gilbert on a net. So thank you for the moment.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
Thank you. You know, as I look at these agreements, I don't think we necessarily are setting precedence with any of these. I think every opportunity that comes along is different. Gilbert is already a very attractive community with very low barriers to entry, and I think that most of our businesses appreciate that. So it's really, to me, it's in rare circumstances when you do agreements like this, and it's in circumstances that are exactly similar to what we're talking about here, where we have an opportunity to capture revenues from a very wide regional net based on the location of the project, and also when the specific project really represents about the highest and best use from a revenue generation standpoint that you could find on a parcel. And so in general, I feel like this is extremely good for Gilbert. It's at no cost to the town. There's increased revenues for services that we are going to need in the future, police, fire, parks, all of those kinds of things. Keeps our taxes low because the tax base is spread further among other new businesses that's going to come in and generate at least $2 million a year. And so, I mean, that right there is benefiting other businesses because we are going to be able to pay for the services that we are hoping to provide for a little bit easier by having a project this magnitude. And I think that's a fiscally responsible way to vote. So in general, I would just say that a vote in favor of this really is a vote for Gilbert.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
My rule of not repeating myself or others on the dice will continue tonight. I appreciate the comments of everyone. I've made my statements pretty clear, I think, in the other four, five, or 10 public meetings we've had on this topic. I look forward to the furniture store in town. I think they'll be a great asset to the community, and look forward to many years of cooperation between the town and with the furniture store.
Thank you. I appreciate these comments, and as a council, the principles that were described about making sure that all our businesses are treated fairly, we as a council express appreciation to development services. I think the video that came out from Gilbert Digital this week was very positive about the new services that were being offered, and that is feedback that's come from the business community and Gilbert leadership taking a look at what could be done. And that's an example to me of making sure that these services are streamlined, friendly, available to all the businesses. And the incentive discussion comes up, and I, I'll take Councilmember Ray's lead and just be very short in expressing what I said before, that I don't really support incentives, but I do let every business come and propose what they could do for our community, and then have the opportunity to determine whether or not it's worthy of an investment. And so with that, I will be also voting in favor. To the council, I had a chance to talk to the owner Jake Jabs last Thursday or Friday. He was in town over the weekend, and he is very committed to Gilbert, to Arizona. We were also with a business leader last night, not related to American Furniture Warehouse, who is from Colorado, and he speaks very highly of this organization and what they do for communities as far as involvement and support of the community, and so I think it's a very positive for Gilbert. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Lewis, when you, when you make that motion, or whoever's going to make it, could you do the A and B separately? The statute requires that the findings be adopted before this ordinance, the agreement is approved.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, could you help with that leadership?
I will do that. I move that we adopt the findings of the tax incentive proposed in development agreement with American Furniture Warehouse Company is anticipated to raise more revenue than the amount of the incentive within the duration of the agreement, and in the absence of a tax incentive, the retail business facility or similar retail business facility or similar business facility would not locate in Gilbert in the same time, place, or manner.
Second?
Okay, a motion and a second, please vote.
I don't know that I agree with that. Oh, sorry.
That's approved with a five to vote, thank you.
And then I move that we adopt the resolution approving a development agreement with American Furniture Warehouse Company for property located at Power Road and Loop 202 in Gilbert.
Is there, okay, a motion and a second, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote, thank you. Before we move to Agenda Item 25, Councilmember Peterson, as the liaison to the Industrial Development Authority, we have a citizen, and Carlisle, if you could meet Councilmember Peterson right here, we've already done 26, and I saw you came in after, so just give him the feedback right over there, and then hurry back, and then we'll be ready to move on to Agenda Item 25. Vice Mayor Cooper, I understand that we have several who wish to speak, and so Carrie, if you could get, provide the overview, and then we will turn to the citizens who have come to speak on this topic, and we will proceed in that manner.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the council. Carrie Bosley, HR Director for the town. Before you on Saturday, we, not Saturday, on Tuesday, at the study session, we discussed the organizational goal to implement a compensation program as defined by the compensation philosophy by July 2013. I went through each of the steps that we have embarked upon over the last year plus as we move this goal forward. Before you tonight is consideration for council to simply focus on the recommended implementation plan before you. Council adopted the compensation philosophy back in February 2012 and accepted the findings in December of 2012. So before you tonight is proposed pay plans to align with the implementation plan, as well as amendments to the personnel rules, the MOUs, and also amendments to the municipal judges' contracts. And with that, I'll open it up for further questions.
We have had many meetings, probably over the last year, and in study session, we had a thorough discussion, so we could move to the communication or the requests from citizens to speak, or are there any comments at this point? Councilmember Peterson?
Just a brief one. I'm just hoping that we can split it up into each of the different parts for simplicity. There's a lot to do. Is that okay with the rest?
That is, I think we can. And for planning, which parts would you hope that we could...
Well, certainly, A, depending on how that goes, frankly, for me, it could affect what happens with C and D. And then, of course, E, really, A and E are the big ones, but C and D could be affected if A goes whatever way it goes.
There are eight parts to 25. Do we, well, I'll tell you what, when we get to that point, I'll just look for some direction from the councils to whether, which parts we need to do together. So potentially, we'll do all eight if that's the preference of the council, otherwise, we can group some together. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, let's go ahead. We have five requests, one not to speak, but I think you can mention that that's to speak against, and then we can have the other names presented.
Okay, Mayor, we have Gilbert Fiddler, who is, does not wish to speak, but is on the record as being against this item. And then our first speaker that we'd call up would be Garland Hatch, and then after that, Ina Narvez.
And for those who wish to speak, there are four, and so I think the standard three minutes would fit from a time perspective. Okay. Garland, if you could come forward, and what...
I'm just waiting here.
Okay. Then we'll proceed.
We'll go to Ina, and then after that, Rachel.
And Ina, as you get this started, I think you're aware, but I'll repeat it for the others who will be speaking, that if you could state your name, and if you're a Gilbert resident, and then you'll be given three minutes to speak, and I, Mark, I understand, and the speaker also sees the yellow light at 30 seconds. Okay, thank you, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ina Narvez. I am an employee of the town as well as a resident of Gilbert. I would first like to thank everyone in finance, budget, and all those who participated in the comp and class committees then and now for all of your hard work. I would also like to extend a big thank you to Councilmember Cook for taking time out of his workday to come across the street and observe a day in the life of a senior court service clerk as well as an in custody court docket. The majority of the customers the court deals with are not happy, but we still provide excellent, efficient, quality service. The court staff... The court staff and police routinely deal with the less attractive part of Gilbert. It was great to have a member of council over to see what we do on a daily basis, ask questions, and care about what some of the employees' concerns are. A big thank you again, councilmember Cook, for your time. I am here today hoping that, hoping that now all the information for the comp and class study is complete, you will all agree to move staff into their respective classifications. I want to make it clear that I am very grateful that you are considering moving the majority to the market range. I do hope you understand that we are aware this is not a raise. This is where some of us should have been many years ago. In fact, there are some employees that should move past this because of either how long we have been here, experience, certification, and required trainings. I have some concerns that hopefully will be addressed in the near future. One is that possibly as of today, someone could apply for my job and potentially make what I finally may be making after 10 years of service. Another is that some of the employees are already at market according to the study and will not be receiving an increase in salary despite years of faithful service to the town. Cost of living has continued to rise and some are still barely getting by. Without some type of increase for these employees, they may still be forced to move on from Gilbert. Another concern is how long will it take to implement pay for performance and will it be obtainable? Our hope for the future is that compensation will no longer be an afterthought and be what we budget for every year. I hope we stay true to our mission and values and enhance the quality of life, not only for the citizens, but for the employees who have given years of faithful service to the town of Gilbert. Thank you.
Before Rachel, uh, we had announced earlier that Garland Hatch would be one of our, or our first speaker, and I see that he's entered. Are you prepared at this time, Mr. Hatch?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Please come forward.
And Garland, if you didn't hear, um, if you can state your name, if you're a Gilbert resident, then you'll be given three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. And Mayor Lewis, I apologize for being late. I had to leave early from a scout, uh, district meeting, a roundtable meeting, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. I would like to, from the outset, just, um...
And Garland, excuse me, so if you can just state your name again, and then if you're a Gilbert resident.
Uh, Garland Hatch, and I am a Gilbert resident.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. I would like to urge, um, each of you tonight to join, um, with councilmembers Victor Peterson and Jared Taylor and not, to devote to not raise the town employees' salaries and benefits. We would all like a salary increase. We would all like rich benefits. Some of us would love to have the same income we had five to seven years ago. Some of us would love to be fully employed. We all know and believe it's not right to short someone pay for work they have done, but the case before us tonight is something totally different. We are deciding on whether or not town employees should receive pay equal to, or in this case, with benefits and pensions up and beyond the free enterprise market value. In today's economic environment, we rarely hear of people receiving raises. Families are having to tighten their budget. Most people are, are happy just to have a, a job. So in conclusion, I would, um, once again encourage each of you to, please do not vote to increase government salaries, benefits, and pensions, especially when they are so far above market value when you add up, add them all together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Garland.
Rachel? And then after that, Rob Duggan.
Mayor, council, and town of Gilbert, my name is Rachel Lopez Delgado. I'm a constituent and a town employee. I have been a resident of Gilbert for the past 20-odd years and an employee of the town of Gilbert for the past 15. The last time I was before council, I mentioned that you were going to have to explain to some employees how they were not going to receive a raise after not having a raise in the last five years, so I still want to hear about that. I come to you again for you to listen to what I am saying. I'm part of a unique group of employees that's being reclassified into a wrong classification category. And yes, we did take advantage of the appeal process. We received our appeal back from the appeal board without being reviewed, and the reason was because the lower chain of command did not approve our appeal. Now, you know, lickety-split, I was on that. Nowhere on that paperwork did it say it had to be approved. It only asked for their signature and a comment. Our director did not appeal, did not agree with our appeal request, but we asked that it be submitted anyway. And it was. It's still being reviewed at this point. We now have to wait out the process because the committee's been so inundated with appeal requests that they won't be ready tonight. Now, you got to ask yourselves, if there are so many employees appealing that they can't complete this appeal process, is there something wrong here? We've been classified into a Class B-22 category that has no distinguishing characters from a B-21 category. We have reviewed the different category classifications over and over again and have yet to find a distinction between the court clerk and a senior court clerk. We've requested to be reclassified to an administrative support specialist because our duties are different. As I said before, and I even mentioned to councilman Cook, our position is not one of an administrative assistant. Senior clerks are jury bailiffs, courtroom clerks, judicial assistants, calendaring clerks, and senior clerks have to work in the courtroom with the pro tem. Senior clerks are in contact with the jails and not just Maricopa County, the motor vehicle division, to find out why a record is suspended when the court did not order an action. They contact agencies that we use and refer our clients to for progress report or compliance. We listed all these duties that we complete. Maybe they're not in our essential functions, but we do these things to show our customers and the public that we know what we're doing. Senior clerks deal with many distractions and have to complete paperwork, ensure the fees are correct, set dates, distribute copies, respond to different visitors in a courtroom, checking to see if that email that popped up on our screen needs to be addressed immediately. And all the while, we have to listen to the judge. Now, we have an opportunity to work with great administrators and coworkers. We're only asking that we be, there be a distinction between the clerk positions and that we be classified into the correct group. We are asking to be reclassified to administrative support specialist. Please consider our, our request. Thank you.
Rachel, thank you. Rob?
I am a citizen of the town, captain of your fire department. I, I showed up tonight, uh, prepared to, to talk in support of, of 100% implementation of the pay plan in the event that there was a, a large upswelling of opposition from the citizens. Not seeing that here tonight, uh, we went ahead and scrapped all that. Um, I've got about two minutes and 40 seconds left, and I'm going to publicly say thank you for the process, the market-driven process that you, that you brought to this. Your staff that we've been working with, your directors, Carrie here, Dawn, who's not here, Mark specific, the workload has been unimaginable for their staff and support for their staff as well, especially those that are here tonight. Thank you for the tireless hours that we put in working together to, to get to this point. We're right now on the precipice of, of tremendous change here. And to Mark, again, I thank you again for that leadership, and you've got a, a not-so-new city manager in place now and the team he's assembled and the leadership and professionalism he's demonstrated, I, I believe, is, is taking this organization somewhere we've, we've never been before. And, and thank you for hiring him. Uh, the last little bit I've got in, in the minute and 30 seconds left is, again, publicly say thank you to the brave council members who have openly spoken in support of a 100% implementation of the pay plan. Um, I applaud your bravery for making a right decision that supports your employees in the face of some political ideology that might be difficult. Um, it, it is my hope that tonight we have a 7-0 vote in favor of your employees, because let's be clear, a vote in favor of this implementation plan is exactly that. It's a vote that supports your employees who have been working diligently over all these years. And with those final notes, one last time, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Mayor, we did receive one more request to speak by Dave Peterson. And I don't, I don't have any others. If there are any others, please make them known.
Evening, Mayor and council. My name's Dave Peterson, taxpayer of Gilbert.
Sorry, Dave. That, that was the fastest three minutes.
Wow. I see how this goes. Um, yeah, I was, uh, just relaxing after a nice hard day at work, out earning my tax dollars or money so I can pay my taxes. And I understand, uh, that we were talking about employee pay raises today, and I thought, what is this? I didn't think I heard it properly, but evidently I'm at the right place at the right time. I represent the taxpayers of Gilbert, the hard-working business owners out there striving every day just to pay the, pay their bills and to pay their taxes. And it's a heavy load, I got to tell you. I'm still, I'm still down at least 25% from I was in 2009. That's about the time the town of Gilbert went on the four-day work week, sometime around there. That's a 20% cut in services from the town. And when I heard that you wanted a raise, wanted to give everybody a raise for working less, I couldn't sit there any longer. It's a, eh... This country is awash in government spending, and that's what you guys are doing here tonight, spending more of my money. I think the taxpayers, though they're not here, they, they won't sit still for it. Think about it hard before you, you dish it out some more. Couple of things keep in mind. When there's a job opening here, how many applicants are there for to fill that job? That's because they have good pay and good benefits here already. They don't need anymore. They good, they're good people, yeah, but this is, this is a public service, public servant type of a job, not a retirement package. Keep that in mind. Appreciate you thinking about the taxpayers. That's who puts you there.
Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, any others?
No, Mayor, I don't have any others.
Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, if I can just address one of the misconceptions that was presented in some of our citizen comments. When we went to a four-day work week, I will remind everyone, including this council, that we did that as a cost-saving measure to the community and that the employees do not work less hours. They work Monday through Thursday from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. And it turned out, after we had gone through this, and there's some substantial, um, pressure on families, extended childcare hours and a bunch of other things that have occurred on those four days, I know for many of our employees, for some, it definitely has been a benefit, and I certainly won't argue with that. But Mayor Lewis, we did that as a cost-saving measure. We've saved about $150,000 thus far. I realize that that is looking out for our taxpayers and that, uh, we can't willy-nilly decide when we want five days or when we want four days. And in addition to that, it turned out that our businesses, especially our small businesses, appreciated the new hours because they could come in before they opened or after that they, after they closed. And I will add that none of our essential services are closed, but both Municipal Building One and Municipal Building Two, and as long, in addition to that, our, our fire department have gone to four days and, and we have seen substantial savings from that. So I just want to make sure that I've gotten emails about that this week as well, and I want to make sure that misconception is definitely laid out there.
Thank you. Do we want to start left and right, or councilmember Cook, do you want to share some comments?
I'll probably have a lot of comments, but I just kind of want to put some history here. When, when we've, new councilmembers came on, um, on board about, you know, 18 months ago, um, there was a number of, um, things that we saw that we felt like were broken. So let me just share some wonderful news as we've journeyed for the last, um, you know, 18 months as it relates to giving back to the taxpayer. One of the first actions that we did was really hire a town manager with a tremendous sense of business. And I can't thank Patrick and his leadership as well as the staff he's developed, because we are really focused on fiscal responsibility and sustainability in the town of Gilbert. So as a council working with the executive team, I couldn't be more excited to, to have Patrick on board to help us, guide us through our policy and executing on that policy. I know one of the first actions that we took is that we decided to change our election cycle so that we go from the spring of the odd year to the even in the fall year. That saved about a half a million dollars. Shortly afterwards, we were able to look at, looking at our bonds. And with staff's, you know, leadership and direction, you know, we're able to pay off, you know, a couple of bonds that in turn saved a taxpayer over $20 million over the life of the bonds. A tremendous amount of looking at, you know, the, the business sense of how to bring back, you know, and save dollars for the taxpayer. The other thing that has been really impressive has been that in our solid waste organization, we've given back to the residents a seven and a half percent reduction in their utilities. Now, you think about all these things that are happening in a down economy in our business that I'm part of, I don't see really a recovery coming anywhere soon. But all of these things that we're doing has been given back to the taxpayer. So along with this, there hasn't been any tax increases, and if this passes, which I hope it does, there will be no tax increases to any of the taxpayer. We're doing this on our own steam. We're doing it on best business practices, and we're doing it on the efficiency of every organization, every, every department in the organization. So there's a lot, a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of hard work that's been, that we've done here. And, and it's been an accomplishment of this council and this, and the, and the leadership of the executive team. Now, the nice part about this is that all seven of us do agree that there is a need to change the salary structure, and I think we all agree that we're, we're all in favor of that. Now, there may be some points that are nuance, a little bit of differences as to when the effective start date will be or how much of that were the definition of the midpoint. But all seven of us do agree that we appreciate all the employees and that there is a need to be a change in that compensation study or a compensation plan and that structure, and we're going to hopefully move forward with that. So I reserve some additional comments for later.
Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a substantial amount of comments to make too, and actually, four-day work week was on the top of the list. But just below, just above that actually was, um, item G, or G in our motion packet here. We decided on Tuesday to remove that from the packet, and I wanted to make sure that that was stated clearly. The reasoning behind that, I know there's been some speculation, is not because we do not support Patrick Banter as our town manager. In fact, nothing could be farther from the truth. His leadership has been exceptional within the organization. What would be inappropriate is for us to debate at the dais what our town manager's compensation package should and will be. We've done that in executive session, as is the practice in municipalities across the country as well as in the private sector. And so I look forward to those discussions and being able to, uh, pay Patrick accordingly for the work that he has done. There's been statements made about lucrative public benefits, and, and I don't disagree that...
Councilmember Daniels, could I interrupt real fast?
Absolutely.
And this will be helpful for the council. So we're, we've taken off G. In an interesting conversation with Carrie, from a perspective of being efficient...
In an interesting conversation with Carrie, from a perspective of being efficient, Patrick's or our town manager's review right now is August, and when you think of our cycle of July 1 as our start date for our fiscal year, what Carrie said is that it's really hard to do an August review because then you have a dollar figure that you estimated in the budget, and you may be accurate or you may not be. And the goals to our town manager have such an impact on the rest of the town that, in reality, it would be much, there would be improvements if we did the review a little bit earlier. And so I have asked Carrie with an understanding that I would bring it up to this group, and it's not, we've taken it off, and so we won't necessarily be voting, but I will check to see how the council feels about this, to initiate the town manager's review process immediately. So it's more of a March-April. And even in further discussion, that the ideal time for the future would be a January/February so that that dollar amount can be known upfront, it can be put in the budget, and the goals that come out for the town manager can then trickle down to the rest of the town staff in looking for the next year. With an interesting thought, some of the goals may actually be tied to items that the council needs to discuss from a budgetary standpoint. So that's what I've directed Carrie to start the process. Looking to my right, looking to my left, a summary of that would be that the town manager review would shift to, for this cycle, a March-April timeframe, and then for next year, it would be moved up two months to January/February. Councilmember Cook?
I know that we had talked about the judge. Are we saying that we're going to do this? Okay.
Answered?
We do his in June anyway, and so it's already fact, it can be factored into our budget based on the June cycle.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
Yeah, the only thing I'd say is I would expect Patrick, we gave him some goals that were due in August, I'd expect them to be done by April now.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Councilmember Daniels, excuse the interruption, but as you mentioned G at this point, we won't have any more G discussion. Please?
That was perfect, Mayor, thanks. The lucrative public benefits, we'll get back to that. I, again, would like to remind this council that during the downturn, the town of Gilbert's Health Trust, which is contributed by both employees and the town, gave back $2.5 million to the general fund. And so factor that in when we're talking about the lucrative public benefits, because those dollars essentially bailed us out of what could have been a dark hole. And so we need to keep that, keep that in mind as we move forward. The attrition rate and vulnerability study, we conducted a vulnerability study in the town, we identified what organizations and departments were subject to those vulnerabilities, we identified those, and we recognize that any attrition rate is not what we want. So I posed the question to those who would like to talk about attrition rate, what percentage of an attrition rate is acceptable? If we are hiring and training and investing dollars in employees, we want to keep them here as long as possible, or it is costing us dollars. And so our attrition rate and vulnerability study, we've covered that. This has all been part of this 18-month-long process. We have planned and budgeted for this. Again, we started this process more than 18 months ago, but that's the actual timeframe that we can identify through this program. This has not been a willy-nilly, figure it out as we go. We had a 7-0 vote on the acceptance of the report in December. We had a 7-0 vote on the compensation philosophy that we voted on as a council, that some of our council members had the opportunity to contribute the verbiage to. We have planned for this, for tonight's meeting. There's been a specific effort to make sure that tonight is possible, that we have the ability to carry it forward in our budgets. We would not do this with the concept that next year, we don't really know what we're going to do. This is planned, this is part of our six strategic initiatives that we have in the town. We are moving away from a public-sector model where we reward for years of service and moving towards a pay-for-performance model. That's a private-sector model. In addition to that, we are looking to move our employees to at-will, those who are in the C and D bands, as stated within our council communication. Again, a private-sector model, we are looking to adopt the best practices from the private sector and implement them in the public sector. And the last one is, I've gotten lots of emails about this, too, about the effective date of the plan. We committed to our employees that we would have a wage re-opener in January, and because of the time, energy, and effort that it's taken to come up with this implementation plan, we did not deliver on the January timeframe. This is our opportunity to uphold our commitment that we made to have those discussions in January. And so for that reason, I support a January 1 implementation date, and I will be voting in favor of the pay plan and those other letters of the alphabet that we'll be voting on tonight.
Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try not to do a Rand Paul here. And I had a great story for Vice Mayor Cooper on James Madison's aversion to people raising their own salary that morphed into an amendment 27. I'll save that for another time, though. Let me clarify a couple of things that have been brought up that I want people to know what, where I stand on this. Number one, I want fair pay for everyone. A man is worthy of his hire, and they should be paid fairly. Okay? So that is the, that's the framework of almost all the comments that I'll have here. We've had a couple of things that I want to address in terms of how I'm processing this. One is someone says we have to answer for why we didn't have raises for five years. I had the pleasure of sitting on the Citizens Budget Committee in 2009, and during that process, I had watched a couple of council, actually, before that process, I watched a few council meetings, and Mayor Berman had made a comment that the town, over about a nine, 10-year window, had a 61% or so raise in their wages. My eyes kind of popped out of my slot, and I said, "What?" I just didn't believe the number. I was given the figures of it, I did the math, and he was about right. And so when you look at the rate of growth over that period of time, what's happened, it's true that there hasn't been a lot of raises for the last five years, but the effect of that has brought the wages in line with the private sector. And the Fox Lawson study validated that, and we can see that. It's on page 11 or 12 of that PowerPoint that was accepted in December. So that's an interesting piece of history that's been developing and feeding into this in terms of why, and was that five-year period with no raises a bad thing, or what did it really do? Obviously, everyone's going to have a different opinion on that, but I think that framework is important. I agree that employees need to be in the right classification. I think the work that has been done by Carrie and her team and the consultants has been outstanding. To not have a compensation philosophy and to not have employees in a structured framework doesn't do anybody any service. And that does lay the foundation, as Councilmember Daniels talked about, for pay for performance and lots of other good ways to do performance management. And so I fully support that. I think that's a foundational element that just has to be here, and I absolutely support that in many ways. And the other thing to note that was brought out in the December meeting was that, that doesn't mean everybody's going to get a raise if that structure's adopted, right? So I think there's a misconception that everybody's going to get a blanket raise in this. A lot of people will, not everybody will, because everybody's going to drop into a different piece of the particular structure. During the campaign, there was a lot of people that challenged me on a couple of things, and I certainly made a number of statements that I want fair pay and full employment in our public safety, and I'm committed to that. And that's why I'm committed to fair pay. We don't need to overpay, we need fair pay to the market. Okay? And full, I want all the boxes filled. If we need a box, and that should be on there, we want it filled, and I'm committed to having a fully-staffed public safety department and everyone fairly paid in that. And I'm here to fulfill that commitment that I made along the campaign trail. The other thing that I want to point out, make sure that citizens know what our attrition rate is, we've talked about that, Councilmember Daniels made a few points on that. When I asked staff on that, the information I received was 5% to 6%, the number sort of ebbs and flows in that particular range. And the question was raised, well, we need it a lot lower, because it costs a lot of money. Well, as we know, you can put a lot of money into things, and you're only going to get so far, it's never going to get zero. Although, when I have asked some specific public safety directors, what is your attrition rate, it's close to zero. I mean, where it really matters in the town, attrition is extremely low. And that's, along the campaign trail, I heard all of these Chicken Little stories about people are walking away and leaving, and so I wanted to know, is that fact or fiction? So I asked the directors, I looked for the data, and the data just doesn't support the sky-is-falling stories that I heard about everyone in the fire department's leaving and the police department's leaving. And so I just have to go with the facts that I'm hearing from staff, because I have no reason to believe that those are not true. But I think it's important for the public to know what the facts are with our attrition rate. And 5% to 6% is a very good attrition rate. I've been, I had a 10-year career in human resources, I majored in this topic, took extensive classes in this. You know, I'm currently a member of the Society of Human Resource Management, so this is a little bit in my wheelhouse, and so I'm very familiar with this. And a 5%, that's a credit to the town management and what Carrie has done, even in the absence of a compensation philosophy. That's an amazing thing, to have an attrition rate that low, without some of these fundamental elements in there. So let me just put out my point of view on the two things that I think are the important things here, because I have laid some of the foundation. Number one is the job rate, okay? That's going to be the big question, is where do we put the job rate? Is it going to be at the midpoint or somewhere else? If we put the job rate in the midpoint of the marketplace, because what that, the effect of that will be that total compensation will be higher than the market. Why is because benefits for the public employees here are higher than the market, okay? The Fox Lawson study validated that. They said it is comparable to the market, but the market data was the public market. The private market data for benefits was very spotty. It was very incomplete. And so the recommendation came out is, we're competitive, let's just move it to the side, it shouldn't be a factor. And when you look at the trends in human resources and benefits, the private sectors move away from things like defined benefit plans, and they've gone to more what's called paid time off, PTO models. We have, you know, I can go through the data, but there's lots of time off. It is a rich benefit plan, but it is consistent with other public entities. And so we should be clear on what the benefits are. It's not comparable to the private market, it's much better than the private market, and the study did show that, but it is comparable with the public market. So with the midpoint at the market, given a higher, richer benefit package, that's going to put the total compensation higher than what is fair. Okay? So what I would support is the job rate at maybe 44, 45, 46, somewhere in that range, because that will make the adjustment that brings total compensation into the market range for what we're doing. Because when we looked at wages, when we looked at benefits, Fox Lawson really just looked at the private market. When they looked at wages, they looked at public and private. So the research is inconsistent with itself. There was a big flaw in that. So I'm just pointing out that you have to make that adjustment, or I feel that job rate has to be lowered so that total compensation, which is what the taxpayers are paying, to be fair, needs to be 45, 46, somewhere in that range below the midpoint to make that adjustment. Now, I realize that that's a little bit, that the number could go up or down because we didn't get very good data to say what, why is 5, why isn't 7 or 8 or 10? I can answer that a little bit. They did indicate that wages for public-sector employees are about 12% higher. There's a slide in there that kind of alludes to that anecdotally. So just going down 5% or 6% is really just half of what it may actually should be. So picking up about five points. So that's the point on job rate that I'd like to make, and we can hear other thoughts on that. And then the second thing is the effective date. When I've seen different compensation implementations, it's very rare to do a lot of backdating. I mean, that happens, it's usually more one-offs or things like that, but full backdating, backpaying and things like that, with the history that I talked about, that's highly unusual. It's typically put into the next budget cycle. I realize we have money now, and Councilmember Cook made some excellent points on the excellent things the council has done to save taxpayer money, so... But it's typically put into the next one. My recommendation is July 1. I'm flexible on that. I think that's the best way to do it for planning purposes and getting in there. But backdating is highly unusual, and I don't know that, I've heard citizen feedback that really supports that. So Mayor, with that, I appreciate the time.
And I did see a hand here and a hand here, and so why don't we do those comments? And then I'll probably, after these two comments, start with Councilmember Peterson and go this direction. So Councilmember Cook, and then Councilmember Ray.
All right, so I'm going to read the conclusions so that we're clear, because we all got this. Again, I'm going to read these five points.
Councilman Cook, can you tell us where you're reading from?
This is from the Lawson PowerPoint presentation that we got. I just want to make sure that everyone, I mean, this is what we all got, and it says, and again, this is the page, it says, "Conclusion: Benefits Data Comparison." Bullet 1, "Overall, the town's leave programs are competitive with the market." Bullet 2, "Relative to the public sector, the town's retirement contributions lag that comparable organizations are provided to employees." Bullet 3, "The town's contribution for medical and dental premiums for employees is less than the public-sector market, I mean, public-sector market by average of 7%." Bullet 4, "The town lags the public-sector market with respect to its bank leave policies and practices. Other bank leave policies are competitive in the market." Basic life coverage of one-time annual salary prevalent is 30% of the public-sector organization, which is in line with the town's provides to its employees. And then obviously, the final recommendation was, "No changes are recommended to the benefits provided by the town at this time." So am I reading something wrong, Councilmember Taylor, that I'm not reading here as you point out these facts? I'd love to see the data that you're saying here.
Do you want to speak first before?
My only comment, Mayor, was Mr. Lawson is here, and if it's a benefit to the council to have him explain the benefit portion of this, then we can have him do it. If it's not a benefit, I think Councilman Cook just gave a pretty good summary of what Mr. Lawson's report said.
Not to mention, Mayor, but as a council, we did accept the report that was provided to us with a 7-0 vote, and to my recollection, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion, further discussion about benefits.
As a council, would we like to have Mr. Lawson speak and explain the benefits? Are we okay? So with your summary, we'll move on, but I think Councilmember Taylor, and then Councilmember Peterson.
Councilmember Cook, what I was looking at is, they're effectively talking about how we relate to public-sector benefits. Because of the lack of really good data on the private-sector column, and I would refer you to slide 34 is what I was looking at, 34 and 35, mostly 34. As you can see in that middle column, private sector, there's a possibility of really good data there, and really, they're comparing us to the public-sector data. And you're right, they are highlighting the deficiencies, and I'm not going to, the facts are the facts, I have no reason to mistrust those, but I just don't see, on the wages side, they're looking at public and private. On here, they're really just looking at public, and we know that public benefits are more rich than the private benefits. I mean, I've seen it firsthand, and there's plenty of data to show that. Anyways, that's where I'm getting that from. I appreciate the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, and just to point out, on that same sheet, slide 34, and I can literally go down the line, there are seven rows of comparisons between what we, Gilbert offers, and both comparisons to the public and private sector. But if you go to the difference of Gilbert versus the private sector, literally, six out of seven of those rows say not applicable. I mean, that's what we have with this. And even on the second page, 35, you have the same scenario. You've got three rows, and two out of three say not applicable for that comparison to the private sector. And we just don't, we don't have a lot of data on that. And so let me go ahead with some of my thoughts on this, if that's...
Please.
So first of all, my context in being here, I mean, here on the dais or dais, I've been corrected, I guess that's how I'm... been corrected, I guess that's how I'm supposed to say it, is that I'm here to protect individual rights. It's that simple. I think that's the proper rule of government. And it is a fundamental, basic individual right to keep the product of your own labor. Yeah, seriously. That's really important. And, you know, when we take tax dollars, that, those are sacred funds. And the same incentive that says we shouldn't raise taxes is the same motivation that should drive us to cut them whenever possible. The way I sum it up is, is similar to what Thomas Paine said in, in his pamphlet. He said, oh, Common Sense, that's what it was called. But anyway, he said, the idea of government is to surrender to government as little of our property as possible to protect the rest, so that we can keep the rest. That's the idea. So to me, I am committed to competitive pay for our employees. I've said that, and I will do that. And, and, but I need to clarify, my purpose in that is to protect the citizens. We have to have employees that are skilled and capable, doing their jobs well to protect the rights of our citizens. So that's my goal. The compensation philosophy, I agree, that's been a great thing. I spent a lot of time on that and a lot of hours. And if there's confusion on how the job rate versus the midpoint of a salary, pay salary range, if there's confusion, I can clear that all up tonight. But I will tell you, that was important. We actually have a written philosophy on how we're going to pay our employees. We have clear expectations now. There are rules, and everyone plays by the same rules. And that's wonderful. And I think that's a huge step forward. I also agree that the market study was critical. And again, my goal is to competitively pay so that we can have good people here. And we can't know what that means unless we study the market. So that was critical. It was wonderful. And it's been a great tool for us. I won't say I'm 100% satisfied with it. I did vote to approve acceptance of the report. There are parts of it I was disappointed in. And you're right, I didn't raise a big fuss. Shame on me. I'll just say it was my mistake. But that doesn't change the fact of what the facts are. And we can look at them tonight. So if, if that's what I have to do is say I made a mistake, then I made a mistake for accepting it. I should have made a bigger fuss over it. But we do not have great comparables to the, to the data there. Now, the, the job rate, I want to make it clear, hopefully there's no arguing about this, we had never said it yet. Which percentile of the market hasn't been defined? The compensation philosophy left that open. I know the way they've run the numbers now is at the 50th percentile. It doesn't have to be there, just to make that clear. And the other thing I don't agree on is that 50th percentile for the wages makes the most sense. I don't. And I don't need to go through all of it again. I think Jared said it very well. The bottom line is, and this is where I do have data, and I brought the latest release of the Bureau of Labor and Statistics report, and they have the Mountain Region broken out. So if we need to look at that. But you can go down the line on every single benefit, every single one. And you can compare private to public. And almost every single time, there's some rare exceptions, but they shift around in the types of benefits. Overall, it's clear, the public sector has much better benefits than the private. And anyone that wants to look at the data, I've got it here. So the bottom line is, we do want to pay competitively. That's important. That's our goal. We're going to do that. My suggestion was to put it at the 45th. There's a rational basis for that. First of all, we already know we're 11 to 12% above the private sector. We have factored that in, and that's good. That helps. But we still have to recognize where we're at. And the study also made it clear that the, our experts have told us within 5% of the market is still considered very competitive. You go to 10%, and it's competitive. So we still have, we have room to stay competitive. I'm not saying to go down into competitive at 40 percentile. I think we can go to 45th. This is probably going to cut the, the suggested expenditure tonight by almost half. I'm guessing, I can't, I haven't run the numbers. That's going to take HR to run through. But I do think that makes more sense. I think that's better. It's more sustainable. And I think we'll be able to keep great people and continue to serve our citizens. I think that's the right approach.
Councilmember Ray?
I appreciate the comments that have been made by the council members. A few things to say, and I've said this in different environments before, I am opposed to giving raises just to give raises. In my company, in companies I've worked for, we, we don't give raises just because you've served X amount of years, et cetera. With that being said, I do think that it's appropriate to pay people what the market rate is. And in our company, in other companies I've worked for, if employees hit certain standards, certain preset goals in performance, then they are eligible for a raise and/or bonuses. And I think that is the way that companies should be run. And so I'm excited with this study for a few different things. One of which is, we aren't just going out and giving a blanket 3%, 5%, 10% raise to everybody. We went out, we had a study done. And there's a few comments that I've heard via email and different social medias that I want to talk about briefly is, number one, comments that this was not a transparent process, that town staff may have done research, and also gave the implementation idea, which we know is false. We went with a third party. After four public meetings, Fox Lawson Associates was chosen. They were given a policy direction written by the council, and I would probably say it's fair to say spearheaded by Councilmember Peterson. And it was a good policy that they were given to go between the 25th and 75th percentile of market rate. And I think that they did a great job. Over the last, I think it's 18 months or so, this is at least our 10th public meeting where this topic has been agendized. In addition to those 10 public meetings, we've had multiple budget discussions where this continues to come up and discussed. So for somebody to say that this was a non-transparent, that this was a last-minute Tuesday night decision, I think is disingenuous. And I hope that they say it simply because they didn't know the facts. And if you just watched the Tuesday night study session, I can understand that there's some concerns. But there's plenty of meetings in January, and May, and February, and December, and January again, and February again, where we talked about that. And there's been lots of great discussions and commentary given by council members, by the mayor, by town staff, by residents of the town as well, who've given their opinions on that. I know that there is been dispute on the council as to the 50th percentile, the market rate there, and dispute as to whether or not that was a direct council given, or direct policy given to staff when they came up with their recommendation of a 50% of market rate, which would be market rate. I think that that is a fair number, being that the policy was be between the 25th and 75th percentile. I don't think it's fair to come in and say, and I'm giving some examples here, that HR should be at 40%, and police should be at 60, and fire should be at 45%. I do think it's fair to set the middle line and be at 50%. It sounds like from Tuesday night and from tonight, everyone on the council agrees that there should be a pay increase. Now, it sounds like we're arguing anywhere between 1% difference to maybe up to six percentage points, 45% to 50%. And so I'm glad that we're at least that close. I haven't heard anything convincing yet that says that our benefit package is worth 2%, worth 3%, worth 5%, worth negative 5%. I think that there's ideas out there, and nothing has been validated that says your benefits package is worth X amount. And I think that Fox Lawson made it very clear that our benefits package is, is on average, the same as others. And they were very clear, Mr. Lawson was, that they can't compare our benefits package directly to the private industry. And that's why when Councilman Peterson spoke of all the different categories, it wasn't applicable because it's very different. We are forced by our state legislature to have each of our town employees be part of retirement system. They don't have a choice if they want to join a 401K or do something different. That's not something as a council that we can change and mandate. We are fortunate to be self-insured, as Councilmember Daniels said. And because our employees, and knock on wood, have been a healthy group, we've been able to have a very low policy rate for them. But also, the town's contribution has been very low compared especially to other jurisdictions. And so we appreciate that. There's been concern as to, did we budget for this, or did we not? When I look back at the different budget reports that we've had, we first announced this more or less in August of 2011 at a council retreat, that we wanted to move forward with some sort of look at our compensation philosophy and study. In December, council decided, and it was a split vote, to give a one-time payment to the employees in lieu of any sort of, of raise and sort of, any sort of bonus. But then in December 2012, after that was approved, findings were presented to the council. In 2012, excuse me, January of 2012, the zero-based budgeting was set, and the discussed setting aside funds for the adjustments in the year 12, year 13 pending results of the study. We were told in May 2012, when we awarded the contract to Fox Lawson, that this would be done in December. And so at that point, we knew that there would probably be some sort of adjustment, that some employees would not fall within that 50th percentile. We figured that some may fall right on it, and perhaps some would fall above it. And so at that time, there was a money set aside in the budget and the contingency that would help offset any sort of changes when this study came along. In May, again, we went forward, assuming this would happen in December. In December 2012, at one of our first meetings, in fact, the first meeting of that month on the 4th, was the first time that we were told that this wasn't going to happen in December. The first time I was told, perhaps someone else was told. And it caught, I assume, all of us by surprise. And that was because the study came back, there was a lot of budgetary things to discuss. And our budget staff said, we need to wait a couple of months until we can get this figured out. Keep in mind that, in my opinion, when we started this, the January previous, we continued, at least I continued to tell staff, let the comp and class study finish. It'll be done in December. By January, we'll have this set and ready to go. Again, December 4th, we were told, no, it's, it's not quite ready yet. And again, I'm not blaming staff. They did a tremendous job, and they have probably twice as much work still to do going forward. But at that point, a couple councilmembers, including myself, said, can we move this up? What can we do to make this happen faster? We've been promising the employees, or at least alluding to, and one could say that's a verbal contract here in Arizona, and that they then should be able to, could get that change in January. Obviously, it didn't happen until now. And I'm proud of the town staff, the budget staff, Patrick, for his work. I appreciate Patrick sticking his neck out as a town manager. I think as a manager, it'd be very easy to coast along and just kind of follow and make it easy. He obviously has done what he thinks is best, and the council has backed him on that. A couple of things, and I'll, I'll make this quick, Mayor. I know I've talked more now than the last 10 meetings combined. A couple of key points that are really exciting to me with this. Number one, the town's pay grades and structures have been consolidated from 238 class descriptions down to 62. This makes everything far more streamlined, more effective, and allows for the employees to better anticipate going forward. Currently, if an employee is below market rate, and they want to receive the pay increase that would bring them to that market rate, assuming they're a band C or higher, they will then become an at-will employee. I think that that is a wise decision to have at-will employees at the town. And I think that that is very unusual in the public sector. Now that a baseline wage is set, all raises going forward are performance-based. I don't know, and I'm sure someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know of any public group that is performance-based raises. I think that that is a brilliant move. I think that that will help with our budget going forward. I think it will help with our employees to know exactly what they need to do in order to receive additional payments, in whatever way those are described. And I think this better aligns the town with the private industry. And again, this process has been very open, has been very transparent. There's been a tremendous amount of hours spent on behalf of town staff, town leadership, and the town council to come up with this. And so I am going to vote in favor of this. And as far as the effective date, I've made that clear on Tuesday night. I do think that, generally speaking, when you have a new payment or compensation plan, you would do it, you wouldn't go retroactive with it. You don't generally do back pay. I think this one is different. And the reason why is, I think that we made it very clear by accident, or not by accident, from the beginning, that this would happen January 1. And then in December, we told the employees, wait, never mind, we're not ready. Let's wait a few more months. And so I think that we are obligated to uphold that end of the bargain, and we said that this would happen January 1. And so for those reasons, I'm in favor of this. And I'm also in favor of the effective date of January 1. Mayor, I apologize for the.
No emotion there. Okay. Vice Mayor Cooper?
Wow. That was awesome. The other night, I gave a very short speech. Tonight, it'll just be shorter than some of the other speeches. And I, I'm frankly a little disappointed by some of the comments here. It kind of seems like the standard operating procedure for the culture of no is to, when you don't like the results of something, to start casting doubt on the methodology, or to, or the process, or something late in the game. And it's just, it's, to me, I don't think that's a fair way, or it's a great, it's a great approach to go with. I mean, this, again, as it's been stated, we've been talking about this for a long time. But what it's really about for me is trying to have the best players on our team here at the town, because that makes us more efficient, it makes us more innovative, and more effective, as we try to deliver services to our residents. And all of that saves us money over the long term. We don't have those inefficiencies. We don't have voluntary or even involuntary turnover. And, you know, attrition, part of the reason why attrition is low, if you will, is in part because of some of the promises that have been made by the council, that we are going to take a look at this, and we're going to do it right. Hold on, please stay with us. And, and we will work on this together in a method, in a, with a good methodology. And so I think we need to acknowledge that as well. But really, what we're, you know, I heard you use the human resource jargon of filling boxes. We're not filling boxes. We're not maintaining boxes. We're hiring talent. And this is talent that is here to, they're putting their lives on the line for us every day. They're also providing key services that are important to a majority of the residents of the town of Gilbert. And I think, while I haven't heard it from the dais, and I appreciate that, sometimes I get a little bit disappointed by the demonizing of public employees out there. I think it's, I think it's wrong. I think it's elitist. And it just doesn't make any sense to me. These people are working for us, and they're providing services that we've asked them to do. And frankly, we want to attract and retain those that are doing that. This study was based on a competitive approach. We've looked at the market. We've looked at, and we can't, we're not operating in a vacuum here. And so it's important that we acknowledge that. Our employees have been patient throughout the process. We've taken the time to do it right. And we've asked for their patience in that. Our process has been sound, as I mentioned. And it's, it's really taken into account the market and, and where we've been and where we're headed. And I believe that it's, it's met the stated objectives that we all had early on. And I think it's been done right. And so for me, it really comes down to taking the information, implementing it in a way that makes the most sense for the people of Gilbert. And I believe what's been presented to us does that. Thank you.
So we have a council with some emotions. And I think that's been a great discussion for the last 45 minutes. And I don't, I don't mean to take this light, because this is very serious. But Councilmember Peterson, I am a little concerned. Am I speaking from the dais or the dais? Did you, did you learn something I need to?
I looked it up in the dictionary, and it's actually got both pronunciations now.
Okay.
True.
I'm feeling a little bit better. To the council, thank, thank you for sharing these comments. And I, a couple of you mentioned the word team. It is an honor. And I do appreciate saying that I'm part of Team Gilbert. And Team Gilbert has a couple of definitions. It's 1,200 individuals who have signed up to be public servants. But Team Gilbert is also 220,000 citizens. And so those who've come here tonight, those who have sent emails, thank you. I, I would say that it is highly probable, and to Councilmember Taylor, who joined in January, some of the, I mean, a lot of what you see up on, on the bullets in the summary, you were watching as a citizen, and were not able to be up here and give a, an approval. And, and so with your background, I think that I take some of your comments and think about them and feel like you could persuade me. And to Councilmember Peterson, Tuesday night, there was something that, as that expression goes to light- goes to light, went on, I, the 45 percentile was something I really had not thought about. And I think that you could probably have persuaded me to at least consider that, and the expression you used, maybe shame on me, that there was a point about last June or in July, when one of those studies came forward, and at that point, I have been communicating when asked that we are planning to have a decision made in December, and it's going to be the 50th percentile. And that might have been, I just misunderstood, you know, the 25/75, maybe my math, so that's what I've been communicating. So I think my statement I make is that my vote and proceeding, as I said in the study session, is, from an integrity standpoint, what I have been communicating will be consistent with the vote. And I thank, again, all of the comments and proceeding, emails of especially many who were not in favor, some of our citizens were very insightful and helpful, and I appreciate the citizens taking time to do that. As a council, I've listened, I don't think any of us at this point are going to change minds, and we can keep having discussion, I'm open to that, but I also think we're ready to vote.
Mayor, can I kind of lead this out, and then others can take other motions, if you want, if you're ready for a motion?
Is there any problem if we, I see three hands, so you're ready to get us going, and I'm ready for that too, but in fairness to the council, I saw Councilmember Peterson's hand, and then I saw three hands to my left, so let's go, those four comments, and then we'll see if we're ready for a motion. Councilmember Peterson?
Susan, can you address for me, what is a wage reopener committing us to? Is that just looking at the possibility of wage increases? That's not a commitment to an implementation date of new wages, is it?
No, it's my understanding, it was just an ability to open it, to look at wages.
And so my other question is, in your legal opinion, have we made any, created any obligations for ourselves for that January date for implementation, as far as having it retroactive, if you will?
No legal obligation.
And I just want to clarify on this. I was very careful on this, I've never made commitments specific, and I'll just say, on the report, when I accepted that report, I did so under the understanding that this was a report, and we were going to still implement, and we were going to set things like the job rate, and we still had that to do. One of the things I get criticized for, and probably for good reason, is getting ahead of myself and start debating things that aren't on agendas yet. So I was trying to hold off a little on that, but I don't think we've made the commitment. I think we've done a lot of, made a lot of efforts to avoid, for example, the backdate. The MOU was altered right here from the dais to remove and strike that language, that we were even open to retroactive pay. That was removed. And I applaud the rest of the council. I will mention, I didn't vote for that MOU, because I oppose the MOUs, I don't think that the unions are in our best interest, but I just want to be clear, I don't think we've made that commitment. So either the 50th percentile makes sense for some other reason, and I'm not hearing it, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing a logical justification, unless there's a true belief that public sector benefits are not above private. I've never seen a serious study or data to suggest that's the case. If that's, you know, unless someone argues that, I think it only makes sense that the wages side should be slightly below. And in my mind, anything makes more sense, anything under 50% makes more sense than 50%, because there's got to be some kind of an offset there. But that was my closing comment, I, well, I don't know, who knows, but I think I'm done.
One of our values, out of respect to you, that's why on Tuesday, when you brought that up, I really appreciated that. And that gets back to, for some reason, and not saying that it was backed up with staff, but the mere fact that they came and did the one-on-one meetings and said, "This is a 50th percentile figure," that didn't surprise me. I was just waiting for the facts to come, and once the facts came, I was ready to proceed. But out of respect, I appreciated those comments, and I'll go left to right.
Well, as I've been speaking at a lot of these meetings, I use the words, "We need to develop a one-team culture." A one-team culture of respect, that we value the employees, we value our citizens. As leaders, we want to inspire our employees to be the best they can. I know in my business, keeping our A and B players is critical. And I know that the service that we provide to our citizens and our business owners comes directly from our employees, and keeping our A and B players is critical. It's important that, you know, when I look at large corporations and how they manage large organizations, it can be difficult when you have many, many employees, but I believe that this is going to define us moving forward, it's going to draw a line in the sand, and it will be the new transformation of how I believe Gilbert will move forward. And there's a lot of, lot of exciting things that, you know, that I see in the future, and part of it is having a wonderful, you know, wonderful motivated staff that's willing to provide service, because we really are a service organization. And this is the right and best process to move forward with. So I'm excited, and I'm looking forward to, you know, all of us as a one-team, one-team culture, you know, move forward.
Councilmember Daniels?
Thanks, Mayor. We did commit to a wage reopener discussion in January, which we did not fulfill. We did not have conversation about wage in January, and that is what we had committed to. So I wasn't saying that we had committed to exactly the date that we were going to implement a compensation plan, but we did commit to discussions that we did not have in January. In addition to that, there's been some speculation or confusion that the council is included in this program, we are not included in this program, we will not be voting ourselves increases tonight. That's not on our agenda, that's not on any of our minds right now, our focus is on the employees of the town. Mayor, in addition to that, when we talk about setting, we've talked about a 44, 45, 46 percent number. That means that the majority of both public and private sector, and we can stick with public if we want, are making more than our town employees. There is some that make less, but that means that the majority are now making more than our employees, and what you haven't factored in is that other public sectors, organizations are also paying benefits. So you've got to tack that back on at the end as well. So yes, our employees have public benefits that are beneficial. It's my understanding that this council also participates in those public benefits, and so I haven't heard anyone mention tonight that we should be paying more as council members for our public benefits that we're receiving. So we are also privy to that, and some of the other members on the council are public employees, and so we've got to factor all of this in. This is about our staff, our employees, this is about what's comparable to the market, and a long-term study that we've done to make sure that we're viable, that we're competitive, that we get the right people in the right places at the right times.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, this reminds me of a cartoon, I think it was BC, where-
By the way, James Madison would have been appreciative of the comment that we're not getting raises up here, that's good. All right, continue.
That's right. He, well, I'll save the story for, you know, Ben later. But there's a BC cartoon where an employee goes to his boss and says, and he asks for a dollar raise, and the employee leaves with a 50 cent raise and is all mad, and tells his fellow colleague, "Man, he cut my pay by 50 percent." The point there is, even if you bring this midpoint down a little bit, to 44, 45, 46, it's still a raise for many people, and that fact shouldn't be lost. And so that's one thing. Councilmember Daniels made a very important point. This is a big balancing act for a lot of different things, but you can't have it both ways. You can't have all the benefits of the private sector and all the benefits of the public sector, and so on and so forth. So that's why, when I look at it, and the balancing act, the 45th percentile is where it's fair for the taxpayers, and it's fair and competitive to the employees. In terms of total compensation, that's what taxpayers are paying, total compensation. And I appreciate a lot of councilmember Ray's comments. One thing that was brought up is that it's hard to quantify the public or the private benefits in the comparison. I have seen that done a lot, which is why it was a little surprising to not see it in here, because I think Fox Lawson's a very creditable organization, they did a lot of good things, but it is done, and it's able to do that. I did find the characterizations of our vice mayor a little bit interesting, and I guess if you don't have a background or have seen a lot of this, then you have to do, use put-downs or, you know, call protection of taxpayers demonization, and that's unfortunate. I appreciate the positive comments for, from Councilmember Cook, Daniels, Ray, Mayor Lewis. We might have differences of opinions, but I appreciate that spirit of one team, where we're trying to do the best, given our backgrounds and given, you know, how we're trying to support the employees, and, you know, Ben, hopefully we can, you know, continue to work on that a little bit, because you're better than that. Thank you, Mayor.
Ready to proceed with motions?
I move that we approve, or that we adopt, the revised pay plans. Are we going to do these separately, or was that-
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, if you don't, I'll probably move to amend and separate something.
Okay, let's just do it one at a time.
Just a pain in the rear.
Let's just do one at a time.
Happens all the time.
Okay. Continue.
I move to approve the, or to adopt the revised play, pay plans.
There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Mayor, I'm sorry. After the second, there's for discussion, I do want to move, I know I'm going to move to amend anyway. I didn't, anyway, I'm sorry for that, but I will move to amend the motion to adopt the schedule but amended to be adjusted to the 45th percentile.
Second.
Now, let me just make sure I do this properly to Susan, so we had a motion, a second, and I pressed the vote button, I don't know if others did. It's cleared, all right. So, we can proceed with that.
Yes, but I did want to point out, there are, there are indeed several different items. Some are interrelated to others. Okay, and Councilmember Peterson understands that, but some are-
If I'm successful in amending A, we're going to have to amend C and D. I'm aware of, I don't honestly know if I'll be successful, but-
Okay. So, there was an amendment to the motion, and there was a second on that. So we're ready to vote?
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Okay, please vote. Okay, that does not pass with a 2-5 vote, and we can return to the motion that was given with the second. Please vote. And that is approved with a 5-2 vote. Vice Mayor Cooper, continue.
Mayor, I adopt, or move that we adopt a resolution amending the personnel rules as stated here in our agenda.
Second.
Okay, so it's 26B, please vote. That's approved with a 7-a vote, continue.
Move that we adopt an amendment to the 2012, 2013 MOU for the Gilbert Police Leadership Association.
Second. Mayor, can I-
Please, Councilmember Taylor?
If we consider the effective date, item number E, that may have an impact on C, D, and F, if perhaps we might be able to do that.
So you're recommending that we go and do E first?
Please.
Okay. Now, we have a motion, a second, on C, I'm okay moving to E, rest of the council?
Withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, a motion on E, please.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve item E with the direction to staff to set the implementation effective date to be the next pay period.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion, second, please, Councilmember Ray?
I would like to amend that.
Okay.
That the implementation date would be January 7th?
The first pay period in January.
First pay period of the calendar year.
Okay, is there a second on that? Okay.
Wait, wait, you got to reset the-
Okay, it's reset, please vote.
Second.
That's approved with a 5-2 vote. So E is taken care of. Okay.
You have to vote on the main motion, Mayor.
The one that Councilmember Peterson made, okay.
Made as amended.
Oh, it got amended, yes, as amended.
It was amended to January 7th.
Right.
Okay. So are we done with that?
No, you have to vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay. Let me clarify for myself and the entire staff, are we, the last vote put the date to January 7th, so is this vote taking the March?
The motion, Mayor, was to do it on, in March, it was amended, the motion was amended to bring it back in January, so now you have the main motion back in front of you, which has now been amended to the January date. So you need to vote twice, this is your second, you need to vote again, on the main-
So yes, vote would be January 7th.
Okay, thank you. Please vote. That's approved with a 5-2 vote. Continue.
Okay, C, adopt, or move that we adopt an amendment to the 2012 and 13 memorandum of understanding for the Gilbert Police Leadership Association.
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with a 5-2 vote, continue.
Item D, move that we adopt an amendment to the 2012 and 13 memorandum of understanding for the United Mesa Firefighters Association.
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with a 5-2 vote. I believe we're at F.
Move that we approve a transfer from contingency for the corresponding fiscal year 2013 implementation costs.
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with a 6-1 vote. And G, we do not, we move on to H.
Move that we adopt amendments to the employment contracts for the three municipal judges, Judge Kutchin, Judge Dunham, and Judge Lauren Walker.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a 7-a vote, thank you. We move to agenda item 27. Councilmember Daniels, if you could give a quick summary of that?
All I want to do is push my buttons. Agenda item 27, we've discussed this previously, about developing some type of philosophy to share with our boards and commissions, so that their decisions then reflect the will and interest of the council. I would suggest, Mayor, that at this time, we allow the staff liaison and the staff member to develop their framework of philosophy and/or goals for the individual boards and commissions with which they have responsibility to. And then those goals and philosophy will come before the council in its entirety, and we will all be allowed to vote on that.
There are several new commissions, or, for example, the HR, and then our ACT commission, and so right now, there's a lot of discussion, and so it would be the liaison and-
Town staff.
And the town staff would, would work on forming and reviewing and modifying, or in some cases, creating new bullets, and that would be presented to the town council.
Correct. And in a time certain, I would love to have it done before our August retreat, and perhaps this could be an August retreat topic for us to review and discuss.
All right, just make sure I understood. Councilmember and the staff liaison to that board will work on-
Correct. I think it'll save time, we don't need to do a subcommittee, it will be public, it'll come before the council, and oftentimes, these boards and commissions are in a place where they're having to translate the philosophy of council and implement programs and strategies, and I think this will help ensure that there's some congruent philosophy between council and boards and commissions.
Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, this particular agenda item is, I'm in full support of this, because I know that going through the HR cap and some other boards, I thought that that was something that was missing, in that direction, especially as you may remember, them providing us a fairly significant document, that as we received it, there was really what I would call no action. So I think this is a great process improvement for us, as relates to our wonderful volunteers that, you know, participate in those boards, and I think this would be great, and I'm all for it.
I don't know where the mayor went. Can I add a comment, Mayor? I just want to support this very much. I appreciate Councilmember Daniels for suggesting this, I think it's- I think it's a very good idea, and so I just want to express my gratitude.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I just have a question, maybe from my education, councilmember Daniels, can you just tell me, when would the peer review opportunity be? Is it at retreat? And then, are you thinking that there'll be some motions to kind of accept new powers and duties or things like that? Maybe just clarify, maybe process.
Powers and duties won't change. Those are actually written down in resolutions. We're talking about goals for the Boarder Commission, when applicable philosophy to apply, and thinking specifically Planning Commission or Design Review Board, or something to that effect. Whereas Human Relations Commission and the Arts, Culture, Tourism, they will have probably something more along the lines of goals. I think these boards and commissions are so valuable, when and if there are things that come before them, generally initiated by community members or town staff. Sometimes there's a sort of a lag in that, and if they have specific goals that they're working towards to enhance the community, we are going to get the best and highest talent contributing to the betterment of Gilbert. So that's the thought.
Thank you. Councilmember...
I think, continuing with councilmember Daniels' comments, I think as we have our new town mission statement, town values, that's a great thing to start working into some of these boards and commissions, and figure out what their role is in those values and that mission statement, to make sure that, again, we're continuing as a town to become better and better.
Thank you. Entertainer motion.
No motion.
Then I'll put my glasses on and see. Direction given to town leadership to move forward with what's just been discussed. Agenda item 28, Board Commissions and Committee Reports, please. Vice Mayor Cooper.
Mayor, this, this relates to the Redevelopment Commission, an upcoming agenda item, which really is kind of a summary of something that happened last Friday, so I'm going to fit it in here as opposed to current events. Last Friday, we had the Arizona State University Masters of Real Estate Development Program. Students here, they have spent the last couple of months reviewing the downtown Gilbert area, the properties owned by the town of Gilbert, and six teams presented what they have learned and what they have said is possible for our downtown Heritage District. And I thought the presentations, every single one of them, was excellent. I was very grateful for the way that they stretched our thinking, and I thought the ideas were very innovative and market-based, and it was kind, it was really cool, actually. And so for anyone that missed that, we were fortunate enough to tape that, and the video is available on the town's YouTube site and our Facebook page. I think you can get links to it from there. And also, if you're, if you got it down right, you can catch it on Channel 11. I think there's a replay there as well. Next steps on, on it are that we will discuss some of what was presented at the Redevelopment Commission, or they will discuss that, I should say. And then there's a couple more months of study, where they're actually going to drill down on six specific parcels, and really look at what the highest and best use is for the town as we try to decide what to do with those properties. And the results from that additional drilling down will occur, or will be presented to us in May of 2013. So it's very exciting, and I'm really appreciative to ASU for the partnership on this project.
Thank you. Other reports? Councilmember Cook?
And this is really a report from AMWA, and, and also understanding, really, the CAP. There's, there is going to probably be, again, it's just kind of a heads-up, and I know Hawkins could probably spend more time talking about this, but as we know, at the Navajo Power Station, which powers all of the CAP pumps and so forth, the federal government is obviously applying some stricter environmental restrictions on the Navajo Power Station. I anticipate that the cost of CAP water is going to rise. I don't know what that impact will be to our residents and business owners, but I just want to kind of give a heads-up that there's going to be an increase of water somewhere in the future. And again, I'm not sure where that's all going to go yet, but I just want to give everyone a heads-up, that's probably going to happen.
Let's see, a moment of silence as I contemplate what... I hurry and run out and get some water fast, but, thank you. Any other comments to my left, and reports? Okay, let's go to agenda item 29. Well, let's see. 29. Future meetings. I brought this up in the study session, and I told Vicki I would help. When we finish, if you could just, the six of you, let me know if you're planning on attending the March 19 East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Okay, there's one already. You're good.
But you can get excited.
Eddie, okay, maybe I'm doing this real fast.
You're good.
You're good. Now, maybe? Okay, five yeses and two maybes. That was, I meant to do it after and save time, but I, the two maybes, two maybes, get ready for this. It was announced midday that the MC for this event will be Metalark Lemon. You're in?
I'm in now.
Okay. Maybe goes to, in?
Sure.
All right. Done. And for other citizens, if you're interested in seeing Metalark Lemon in action, he's got to be bringing a basketball. He'll be bringing a basketball. Look forward to that event, and you'll, you'll get more details later. So, agenda item 30, report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to recognize some of our staff. Over the last several weeks, we've had some great things that we've been involved with. First, the, we kicked off our Spark App Competition in partnership with ASU's Polytechnic Campus and Intel Corporation. We had teams from 13 different high schools represented from all around the region. Over the next couple of months, they'll be working very closely with the software engineering professors at ASU Poly, as well as some of our own town staff, and they are going to develop, take some of the data sets we have, and create some applications that our residents may end up using one day. Again, these are all high school students, and it was great. It was a full house. Brilliant, brilliant kids. Some of them had already started on their apps even before the day was over, but we're really excited to see about what they're going to produce on May 1, when we announce the winners. And ASU Poly and Intel have been great partners with this. Next, I wanted to thank Dan Henderson, our Economic Development Department, for their work with ASU and the EMRED program. Again, as Vice Mayor Cooper had indicated, if you missed that, you can find the replay on our website. The kids came up with some great concepts and some great ideas for our Heritage District. We're going to be going to the next step, but that was a lot of work. We are the first municipality that ASU's EMRED program has ever partnered with to do something like this, so we're very proud of that as well. Dan and his team did a good job, as well as the folks in our Development Services Department who were involved, Kyle Maris, Linda Edwards, and some of the others. And lastly, I want to thank Carrie Bosley and our Human Resource Department. Carrie and her staff have worked very hard over the last 14 months or so. This has been a very long process. It's been a lot of very hard work. Carrie approached it with a high degree of professionalism, as well as her staff. I also want to thank our deputy town manager, Mark Skosipic, for the important role he played in that, and has always the excellent job he does in working with our, through our MOU process and the reopener. He really brings a very high level of professionalism to that and does excellent work, and he was an integral part of our competent benefits process as well. So thanks to all the great employees we've got, and a lot of the great things we have going on.
Thank you. Agenda item 31, report from councilmembers on current events. Councilmember Cook?
Well, I wanted to share that with all of you, that I had an opportunity to hang out with our SWAT team at the range, and I was asked to participate.
And?
And my shoulder, it was using their Benelli semi-automatic shotgun with slugs and so forth. My shoulder is, was somewhat sore for a number of days, and they allowed me to, I don't know what the actual thunder roll or whatever it was, but it was a lot of massive shooting, and I will say that I did hit the target. The other thing that was obviously amazing to me is that they demoed one of their small robots, which I never actually see that, that device work. And I was extremely impressed, because it provides a level of safety to our officers in a situation where they can throw in a little robot in to actually scan the insides of an area, both day and night. So I was very, very impressed that, with the equipment and the training that they have. So I encourage any of you to go to the range with them.
And join the SWAT team. I like it. Okay. Any other? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you for allowing me to be a few minutes late. I was attending my second graders' musical contest, concert at Neely Elementary.
And is this a current event? You're going to tell us how she did? I like this, this is great.
She did great. It was a patriotic program, and it gave me hope that, the hope for the Grammys and American Music Awards, because there's great talent in Gilbert. It's wonderful.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to our, our breakfast, our We Are Gilbert breakfast. So grateful for everyone who came, and I just want to put it out there, we actually have a website now, partnering, partnering up with some of the good, you know, nonprofits in the community, Gilbert Can. You go to GilbertCan.org, you can actually see a list of all the volunteer opportunities, and you can click on it and sign up on behalf of yourself and on behalf of other volunteers that you may be connected to. So also, we have the mayor's character race on that same website. So I just want to invite everyone to go there. Easy address, GilbertCan.org. Thanks.
Good segue to agenda item 32, report from the mayor on current events. So the mayor's character race and relay, Saturday, March 23. Check-in time, 8:00 a.m., race time, 8:30. Details are on the town website. I guess I better do a commitment pattern here. All three families are in?
We're in, we already signed up.
All, already signed up, you show off. All three families in?
So are we going to be on a relay team?
Well, I think it's family.
Oh.
You're in the family now. They've already signed up. This is one of those times where I shouldn't have asked the question unless I knew the answer, so the Lewis family hasn't quite signed up, but we'll, with this memo, follow. The, today I attended the East Valley Partnership Meeting, and one of the agenda items was related to TPT, our tax simplification, and gave me a chance to repeat again to the business leaders there that our Gilbert town, the other 90 cities and towns in the state of Arizona are very much in support of tax simplification for businesses, and we continue to work with the governor's office, the legislators involved, to find solutions to the construction sales tax. Discussions are taking place, and there's a lot of positives going on, and it's, it's still ongoing. The last item I mentioned is to the state of Arizona, to the East Valley, to Chandler, the announcement that came of GM with their Tech, Technical Innovation Center. I think that's fantastic, another 1,000 jobs for our community, and especially that a lot of the hiring they will be doing will be from our local universities, and so I'm excited from a workforce standpoint of what that will continue to do for our area. Did we miss anything? On that, right below agenda item 32, it says adjourned.